Excuse me. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Wilmington School Committee for Wednesday, April 24th. If you could please join me in saying our pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
I have to say, in a couple of years of being chair, that's the first time I've used the gavel, and it worked.[40.32][40.32](laughing) So, thank you very much for your attention. I believe our first order of business is we have a presentation from the Woburn School, Jessica Berry's 3rd grade class. Mr. Stragnus?
Yes.
Sorry about that. If you'd like to introduce, please.
Yes. I don't know if you could tell, you had to use the gavel, which means they're really excited to be here.
Us, too.
Yes. So, for April, which is National Poetry Month, we have members of Mrs. Berry's 3rd grade class who are going to come read a poem that they wrote. Not all the students could come, so what we did is we made a book with all the students' poems in it for the school committee, so you can have this, just so the kids know that everybody got a chance to have their poems read. So, Mrs. Berry's going to introduce the students. They're going to come up and read their poem.
Great. Thank you. First up is Karina Jenkins.
I think summer is super fun because there's always so much sun. I like to run and jump and play, especially on this nice warm day. I love summer very so because it will not ever snow. When the day comes to an end, I hope it will come back again.[124.67][124.67](applause)
Okay. Next up is Spencer Walker.
Sunshine shines everywhere, playing all the time, running and leaping in the great sunshine, never stop running, groundhogs poking their heads everywhere.[146.34][146.34](applause)
Molly Kenny.
She does speedy fast hunters, find prey in the habitats, babies are so cute.[167.01][167.01](applause)
Okay. Next up is Logan Forbusch.
On April vacation, I like to sleep. When I know I have to go back, I will weep. When I go outside to play, it's always so much fun. I always know I'll see the sun.[192.51][192.51](applause)
Okay. Next up is Emily Lacudera.
Hi, I'm Emily. Hi, I'm Emily. I like dogs and cats. My dog's name is Ally, but she's such a brat. I also have a brother. His name is Andrew. He loves the park and plays basketball with you. I like to play with toys. They're called LPS. I love sour candy. I love sour kids. They are so sweet, but this is now the end. Wasn't this a treat? Want to be my friend?[228.01][228.01](applause)
Robbie DiMaderos.
Hockey's my favorite sport. There's always something to see on the board. My family comes to every game. They always have to scream my name. It's always so fun to see all my teammates jump with glue.[250.01][250.01](applause)
Kaitlyn Marvin.
I always miss a school party because they say I'm always tardy. My teacher always says, "In the hall, never run or you might fall." There are many fun math tools I like to use because they're cool. When I eat my lunch, I get annoyed to hear my crunch.[273.02][273.02](applause)
Brady Cassidy.
Sharks. I am a shark. I swim in the dark. I hunt in the ocean and cause commotion. I live deep down. You won't find me unless you go scuba diving with glue.[293.31][293.31](applause)
Molly Kilburn.
When you are bored. When you are bored, you can do anything, like run around or swing on a swing. You could play a board game or just read a book. You could juggle or paint or be a good cook. The choices are endless of what you can do. You can draw, you can jump, and go shopping, too. To get rid of the boredom, do all of these things. I really suggest to go on a swing.[321.33][321.33](applause)
Samantha Nelson.
Summer is hot, summer is cool, summer is great for swimming in the pool. Summer is great for playing outside, like swings, monkey bars, and slides. Summer, there is no school. I don't like school because it's not cool. Lunch, recess, gym, and now, I like them all because they're all a ball. I don't like school because it's not cool.[346.02][346.02](applause)
Leah Doucette.
Spy Cat. Spy Cat is my... Spy Cat, my cat. Ella Avery's too. Tyler Chase, burping twin, Super Kitten, too. Devil's Rapid Fire Blast with Icy Angel Cat. Nian Cat goes on and leaves his super sticky cat splat. Superteam Bloopers Team, mistakes are always fine. Dorita, Spy Cat's favorite tree, is always time to die. Superteam Bloopers Team, fighting all the time, yet always watches together when it's time to fight crime. We all... We all are cats, and that is that.[390.44][390.44](applause)
And last up is Ella Avery.
The crazy teacher. I have a crazy teacher. Her name is Mrs. Creature. You may think her name's the weirdest thing, but it's her favorite feature. She also makes us write a 10-page essay every day, and oh, the math, the math, the math, the math. It's like when you're eight and still take a bath. During recess, it's just never bunches of fun. We play all day long until she makes us sing a very high-pitched song. All my friends crowd around my class, wondering why we're singing about a bunch of gas. Me watching in embarrassment, thinking about running across the world and living in a tent. And lunch! Now I have two rhymes, sweeping them around like a bright silver duck. Heads or tails? Tails, no heads. Okay, it's heads. So, I don't know how to say it, but bunches of bunches. Last in fall begins to fall. We get two hours of poetry, which I don't hate at all. So, I guess Miss Creature's not so bad, but wait until you meet my dad.[450.52][450.52](applause)
Those are great. Thank you very much for sharing your poetry with us. We appreciate it. And we always love having guests, but we understand you may not want to stay through our whole meeting this evening, so you are certainly welcome to leave as you wish. Thank you for being here, though. We appreciate it. We'll just give them a minute to exit.[477.31][477.31](noise) (noise) Okay. Not too many things on here this evening, but I still will go slow.[563.62][563.62](laughing) The first item is an approval of minutes. These are from our last regular session on April 10th. I believe we were all present, with the exception of Mrs. Burns. Any changes or discussion on those minutes? Great. I'll ask for a motion to approve, please. Mr. Talbot, I saw your hand. Mrs. Bryson, I saw you as the second. All those in favor? And we have one abstention, Mrs. Burns. Thank you. Next item are the warrants. We have G429, R238, L77, L78, L79, FS30. I'll take those a group. Mrs. Burns, the motion to approve. Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. Thank you. All those in favor? That would be unanimous, Tristan. Thank you. And then we'll take up the payroll warrant. This is for week ending April 24th, 2019. A motion to approve that, please. Mrs. Newhouse, thank you. Seconded by Mrs. Burns. Thank you. All those in favor? That looks unanimous to me. And then we have a circuit breaker warrant, circuit breaker number 22. Motion to approve, please. Mrs. Bryson, thank you. Mr. Talbot with the second. All those in favor? Thank you. We've got one abstention, Mrs. Burns. And finally, we have a sped warrant, sped number 43. Could we have a motion to approve, please? Mrs. Bryson, thank you. Mr. Talbot on the second. Thank you. All those in favor? And we've got four with two abstentions, Mrs. Newhouse and Mrs. Burns. And that brings us through our consent agenda. And next up would be our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items to bring to your attention. In the packet, there are three... Sorry, two items and one additional one, just to make note. And the first three have to do with searches. It is, as you know, a very busy time in the district as we are engaged in and have completed a number of searches recently for leaders in the district. I'll first bring your attention and the member of the community's attention to the press release for the Woburn Street School. I've shared this previously, but there's the actual record in here. And again, Ms. Suzanne Sullivan, currently a principal with the Bill Ricker Schools, where she serves as the principal of the Parker Elementary School, is... I'm pleased to be able to share, joining us here in the district is the next principal of the Woburn Street School effective July 1st. And so that's in there for any members of the community who might be interested in taking a closer look at Mrs. Sullivan and her background. We are gearing up for the assistant principal search, also at the Woburn Street School. The posting has been up for that. In fact, I think it's now officially come to a close. I'm pleased to be able to say there has been a tremendous level of interest in that search, and so we are preparing to embark upon a search for the assistant principal position. And as that moves forward, I'll keep you certainly informed of that. We will have it as a similar principal search, a little bit scaled down somewhat, but certainly still involvement for... An opportunity for staff to provide feedback for the principal team, the central office team and such, to meet with the candidates and collectively provide feedback. And Ms. Sullivan will also be involved in that search, so we're looking forward to that. The director of technology in digital learning, there's nothing in your packet, but just to take the opportunity, if I may, to let you know that that search is ongoing, very active, in fact, in the last couple of weeks. A cross-section of stakeholders have met to interview candidates that took place both before the April break and again yesterday. And we are going to, as I think I've also mentioned here previously, move forward with that a little bit on a quicker timeframe because we know that there are some neighboring districts who are searching for the exact same position. We will have candidates who will be visiting here later this week and first part of next week. Again, we will, because of the fact that this is a district leader position, take careful steps to ensure that these candidates have the opportunity to meet with our district leadership teams, our principals, and we'll go through a collection process of feedback as we move towards a finalist. And again, I'll keep you informed of that search as we move forward. Two final things that are not on the agenda, but just to bring to your attention. Niask was visiting the high school here the last two days. Been a very involved and very active couple of two days, I can tell you, for both Ms. Peters and her team. Dr. Regan, Mr. Rogirio, and I had the opportunity to meet with the Niask visiting team yesterday for approximately an hour, but they... That they are long days here as they visit classrooms, met with students, met with parents, and so on. And so this is the first part of the Niask visit process that you might recall. And finally, also related here to the high school, quarter four, believe it or not, for seniors, comes to a close April 26th. So, lots happening here at the high school as we really sort of move into the final phase of the school year for many. And that's it for myself tonight. Thank you.
Great. Any questions or comments for Dr. Brand on his report? No? Okay. Moving right on this evening. Okay. Next item, under old business, we have some information relating to Dr. Brand's proposal on the Office of Student Support Services reorganization. Dr. Brand.
Sure. So, in the packet is a recap of the memo that you've seen here as a committee previously. And again, if not for members of the community who might be interested in this item, it provides, as you recall, a background and overview of this proposal that essentially, I'm using the term reorganization because I do believe it's that. The proposal at the heart of it is really an intention to try and provide increased capacity in terms of personnel within the Department of Student Support Services, as I've spoken to previously, an area that there are, I think appropriately so, is some concern in terms of our current capacity, and an effort to try and expand the support for that department as a whole in service to our programs, of course, our schools, our students, and their families, respectively. The heart of this reorganization really involves repurposing an existing position, that is the Special Education CTL. And with your support, hopefully this evening, the approval and allowance for us to create a new administrative position that's not in the contract. It is a full-time administrator... It's an administrative position outside of the contract, the coordinator of special education pre-K to 12. Seeking your hopeful vote this evening, again, to approve the creation of that. We'll continue to, as I've also mentioned, work closely with the WTA towards the ratification of this. It is a contract-related item because the Special Education CTL is in the contract, but we have had many promising discussions with the WTA president, and I know that we're moving towards that resolution here. Happy to take any questions, if you have any, on the proposal here this evening.
Mrs. Burns.
I'll try to keep it brief, but I very much support the intent in the... In this new plan going forward, I do think it'll bring... And I'm hoping it'll bring more efficiency and effectiveness to that area of special education, as pertains directly to our students, the RPs, and the team meetings. Not that it has basis to that decision for this evening. I would like to just caution that with this transition and as you... I mean, I know you have work to do with the WTA to negate this into the contract. I do hope that with this .6 teaching position being absorbed by current staff, that it's done so that through that transition, that the staff who are absorbing it aren't impacted grossly. I might look for... I can't find the right descriptive. But in that if there are checkpoints so that if staff are in the transition of taking on that added role, there's check-ins with them to support them in that process so they'll lease some amount of disruption to our students and in their learning environment. You know, it doesn't occur if I'm saying that. I want to, but that's... I just wanted to share that in that process.
If I may. And thank you for the point. Let me... I hope it goes without saying, two things. One, that if there was a hint of concern as it relates to the ability or the capacity of the current... Based upon the current landscape of student needs, as is known at the high school, if there was concern about the ability of the existing staff to be able to appropriately absorb the students and their respective needs on education plans, this would be a very different proposal. And it wouldn't seek to repurpose the current funds, if you will, the budget that's associated with this proposal. That's based upon the landscape that currently exists right now.
Okay.
And arguably, or I would make that same argument in this particular case for special education at any of our schools and staffing, that the budget proposal... The budget that you have previously approved and that's moving forward to the town is based upon the current needs that we know at this time. But the second thing that hopefully is important to note and goes without saying is that this same effort, this same proposal that's here, and that is the addition of or the creation of a new administrative position, quite honestly, as I've come to learn what I have about the district and where we're at specifically in the department, I would have been making this proposal to you. It may not have exactly aligned with the budget with where we were at the time, back in, you know, starting that budget planning in October, November, but this is the right, I believe, decision that's necessary to help provide enhanced capacity within the department. I mean, said another way, if we still needed this .6 FTE for service delivery at the high school, this proposal would still be before you. It might be funded in some other way, but I think it's a necessary step.
I agree. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Ragsdale?
First, I'd like to just echo Mrs. Burns's comment about the teaching staff. And I would hope that we would do a check-in on this at some point in the future, just to make sure that the landscape as it looks right now continues to obtain into the future and that we don't feel that we need that additional digital teaching support. But I think that from where we are right now, that this definitely looks like the right move to make. And I also just wanted to ask quickly about, on page three of your original memo, you listed several key next steps. The approval from the school committee is we're looking at tonight. You discussed the engaging with the WTA, and there are just a few more elements in there about finalizing the job description and revised organizational chart and so forth. I was just wondering if those have been completed or if they are also just kind of in process.
Thank you for drawing attention to that. So, still in process, very much so, but with... In particular, with note to the organizational chart and really the impact that this will have on the staff and the services within the program. As this is finalized, it's my intent to do two things. Whether or not it catches the very end of the year in coordination with your meetings here, that may have to be determined, but certainly to make sure that staff are crystal clear on what the impact of this plan is and how it may affect them, who they're reporting to, the evaluational components. I don't mean students, I mean staff. And any other changes relates to that, it will be my intention to make sure that staff are made aware of this. And this is brought back here. I mean, this... I see this as clearly, it's an administrative position that has impact on our leadership across the district. I think it's only appropriate to bring that for your... For your knowledge, for your awareness as a governing body, and certainly for the community as a whole.
Any other comments or questions? I was just going to share, certainly now that we've had a little time to think about this, Mrs. Burns and I, I think, were the last two members that were part of the discussion the last time we considered the Office of Student Support Services and the staffing and how that group was organized. And I remember back then thinking, geez, that's a really big job. And I had some concerns, to be honest. But now, flash forward to a couple of years, we've seen how things have played out and where we're at now. Reading this proposal makes sense to me. It seems like it's the next logical step. Yes, there's some more work to do, and I would certainly hope, to your point, Mr. Ragsdale, and also yours, Mrs. Burns, that we would continue to evaluate this and make sure that this is working for our staff and certainly for our students. But this seems like a logical next step for me, being through that process before. So, I just thought I would share that. Okay. Seeing no further... Oh, sure. Mrs. Bryson.
I agree with you. And I also think at the last meeting, when we first saw this, it was made clear that this had already been thought through as far as coverage for the students, and that was one of our first questions. Do we actually... Can we actually do this? Does this make sense? And it was... I thought it was pretty clear that, yes, it did make sense, but I would reiterate what everyone has said, that we need to make sure that we're providing those services and make... But Alice seemed to feel like it was... This was going to work just fine with the reduction and all of that. So, I don't know if it would be helpful to see those numbers, if it would help people to see more clearly how many students are being served, but I feel like it was... It seemed to be pretty straightforward that there was going... It wasn't going to be difficult to reallocate.
If I may comment to that. I think that's not so much where my concerns lie, as much as the staff members. I guess what I'm thinking is that with special education and teachers, almost 50% burnout within a two-year process. And as we know, in the discussion, too, that that department has only seen growth with regards to more mandates and more children in needs and more services that we... Our district supplies. So, I guess my... And I don't know what it looks like, so I'm kind of speaking blindly, but I want to ensure that that small role that that .6 played here at the high school, that the staff who are taking it on have the right support so that they can take on that role. And it may be not... You know, it may be nothing that can't just kind of fit like a puzzle piece into what they're doing. I just... I guess my concern just lies, I just want to make sure that they have the times, resources, and tools to be able to absorb whatever that role played so that there's no, you know, disruption with regards to the students that they teach. I think that's where my focus really kind of lied.
Go ahead.
And do we have a sense of how the teachers feel about this reorganization, especially at the high school? Does that have... Do we have a sense?
I have not asked them specifically or directly. I know that Alice has had ongoing conversations with the current Special Education CTL in the role. So, through that process, we've not sort of canvassed for opinion, per se, or feedback, but certainly that linkage of, you know, from the district leadership with the building leadership. I've talked with Ms. Peters about this as we've started to strategize around what impacts are on that level as well, too. So, it's a fair question, but actually, each member, I've not directly engaged.
I figured that, but I meant like, is there a sense of... Is there pushback where we're hearing, maybe there's some, wait a minute, what are we doing? Or are they sort of like, no? I mean, I thought when this first was brought to us, it seemed to make very good sense, and clearly we've seen the need for it. I mean, it's very clear, we need this support. So, I would imagine they would...
This has been socialized, if you will, if I can use that term now, for some time, and I know I have not, and to my knowledge, Alice has not received any direct feedback to say, this is off-base, we can't do this. I certainly will say the same thing in my conversations with Ms. Peters that started some time ago, from the sense of what this would mean on a building... On a day-to-day basis. And it is more here. Again, the CTL currently supports, as you know, both the middle school and high school, but the service delivery component is here, and there's not been that sense of to say, whoa, this is going to be a problem.
Mr. Ragsdale.
One more thing to add on, that we should remember that it's not only the... Having the teaching support that is part of the support for special education teachers, but in fact, the administrative support is a crucial part of it, and that's what we're trying to address here. And so there's, you know, an important aspect of, you know, that we should be hoping to make things easier and improve things for the special education teachers in the, you know, in their rooms by providing them with more administrative support and having someone in a full-time role to coordinate special education in the district.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Newhouse.
I was the co-chair on the CPAC when this was brought forward, and seeing how it's played out the last, what, three, four years since the change for the Student Support Services, it's been an ongoing conversation. I know at that level, until I was there in August, that this is definitely something that's been needed in that department. You know, I had the same concerns the last meeting of, you know, the teaching support, but it sounds that... It seems as though both Dr. Brand and Ms. Brown-Lagrand have done their homework, and, you know, hopefully that plays out, and if we see that it's affecting the kids and the staff, then, you know, come September, October, we can relook at it and if we need to add on that additional support.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. So, we have before us a request to vote on this and accept this, so that if... I'm hearing no further discussion. I'm feeling as though we're ready to make a decision here in general. Okay. So, the recommended motion...
Okay, so the recommended motion before us is to approve the Office of Student Support Services reorganization and the creation of a 1.0 FTE or full-time equivalent position of Coordinator of Special Education, pre-K through 12. Would somebody like to offer that as a motion? Mr. Ragstil? Seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All those in favor? That looks like unanimous to me. Tristan, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving on to new business. I believe first up is a overview of our winter athletics here at the high school. And I think we have Mr. Alberts, who's going to give us some information. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In your packets, I put through the winter sports update. Boys' basketball coached by Dennis Ingram, who was a Wilmington High alum, made the state tournament this past year and had a Middle Sex League All-Star in Stephen Anthony. More importantly, the boys' basketball team did some nice community service. They did a food drive that went to the Wilmington Food Pantry and students volunteered with Wilmington Travel Basketball throughout the school year. Girls' basketball coached by Jessica Robbins, Wilmington High faculty member, beat Lynn Classical in the state tournament this year. Middle Sex League All-Stars, we're fortunate to have three, Gabby Bond, Kylie Ducham and Jenna Tavanes. And girls' basketball did community service with Wilmington Travel Basketball as well as a breast cancer awareness game. Cheerleading coached by Christina Zuccaro, Wilmington High alum, had a great season, placed first in the Middle Sex League, also Division III North Regionals, came in second place and fourth place in the state tournament. And then all the way to New England, they came in fifth place. During the regular season, they won three invitationals. And cheerleading team does more community service than any other team in the school. Just to be brief, I won't mention the stuff they did in the summer and the fall, but this past winter, they volunteered at the tree lighting ceremony and also doing arts and crafts with the elderly at Windsor Estates. Ice hockey coached by Stephen Scanlon, Wilmington High alum, made the state tournament, also won the Haverhill Invitational during the regular season and had Middle Sex League All-Stars Ryan Barrett and Conlon Duffy. Boys' hockey did community service, they did cancer awareness games and military awareness games. Girls' ice hockey coached by John Lopiana, had their best season as a standalone program, best season since the 2009, 2010 season. Leah Karkoudis was the Middle Sex League All-Star. And the girls' team volunteered at Rosie's Place Soup Kitchen at the beginning of the season. Swimming, for the first time ever, the inaugural season was a success with the cooperative team with North Reading High School. Coach Sue Hunter from North Reading Wilmington was the head coach. And Emma Ryan of Wilmington High School qualified for the state meet. Wilmington High had four male students participate on the team and six female students. So overall, it was a great success and thank you for the support of it. Wrestling coached by Joel McKenna, Wilmington High alum, had three All-Stars, Shane Penny and Joe Ganley. And also Joe Ganley was a sectional champion as well. And Wilmington Youth Wrestling, the WHS team volunteered with Wilmington Youth Wrestling as a community service initiative this past winter. Indoor track coached by Mike Kinney, Wilmington High faculty member. We had league All-Stars Greg Adamick, Sam Vince, Tyler Thomas. Also Kevin Eldred, Brian Eldred, Sean Riley and Greg Adamick placed eighth in the Division Four meet. Ben Packer placed eighth in the two-mile. And Sean Riley won the state freshman sophomore meet in the 600. Wilmington indoor track for the girl's side, Coach Brian Shell, Wilmington High alum, was the head coach. Emma Garrity was Division Four State Champion in the 600. She was also named Middle Sex League All-Conference, Middle Sex League All-Star. Other All-Stars were Evelyn Miller-Nuzzo, Hannah Levita, Catherine McLaughlin and Amy Russell.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Mr. Alberts? Mr. Ragstil?
What is the participation like in winter sports compared to fall and spring?
You know, it's a smaller offering of sports, but some of the teams that are larger. We have non-cut sports, indoor track and outdoor track, but there's more offerings when we have outdoor space available in the fall and the spring. So, you know, overall, we have just under 45% of the students participate in athletics. So winter's a little smaller with, you know, basketball has set number of teams, set number of spots. So it is a little lower than usual. So fall is our largest season, then winter, and then spring is our second largest. Thanks.
Any other questions? I was just going to ask the question, I already know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it publicly anyway. For winter sports, which ones required a waiver? Meaning that we needed to ask younger kids to come up?
Yep. Girls' ice hockey, we had the eighth grade waiver. Every school in our division in the Middle Sex League also had that waiver, so it's very important for the program. And we had one girl participate on the team.
Come up from eighth grade? Okay, great, thank you. Excellent. All right. Any other questions from Mr. Alberts? No? All right. Okay, thank you for your presentation, as always. All right. Next up, we have the Reader's Workshop presentation. I believe Dr. Regan, you're going to take us through that?
I will, thank you.
Excellent.
So we've had a few sort of curriculum spotlights that have happened. We've heard about world language and we've heard about our art program, visual arts program. So tonight, I'm just going to bring folks up to speed on where we are with our elementary literacy program, which you've probably heard as Reader's Workshop, soon to be Writer's Workshop. It is the Lucy Cockens Units of Study, that's the curriculum. And the Reader's Workshop and Writer's Workshop is the modality that we use to deliver that curriculum. So as you're probably aware, but just for the public, we are connected with TLA, Teaching and Learning Alliance, which is a regionalized, it's local, they do most of their work in New England. They are, you know, branching out into other parts of the country now, but they are experts on instruction. And we have coaches that are assigned to each elementary school through TLA. And this has been a relationship Wilmington has had with them now, we're in our fourth year. It's very successful. I've met almost all of the coaches. Our primary contact from TLA is quite excellent. She's actually a Wilmington, born and raised, she doesn't live here anymore, but she's a product of the Wilmington Public Schools. And she's just really, really quite excellent. We have multiple coaching sessions a year for each elementary school. Because of our longstanding relationship, we were able to apply for scholarship days this year and we were awarded two and a half additional days at no charge. So Holly Vanashevitz and I decided that we would use that time to actually work with the leadership as opposed to adding more time into the coaching because we felt like while the teachers were working on honing their skills in workshop, it's important also to have the leadership at the elementary level, know what to look for when they go in and they give feedback during informal or formal observations. So we did a half-day workshop with her, just sort of in a conference room, just talking about those look fours and what you should be giving for feedback and what you should expect to see in a typical workshop model lesson. And then we used the remaining two days to be in the four upper elementaries. So we didn't do the two early childhood centers, but we did involve those directors. We just didn't tour those schools. So we went to the Shawshin, for example, for a half a day, visited almost every classroom. And in that visit, there was the Shawshin Principal, the Woburn Street Principal coming over, Holly, myself and Shannon from TLA. And then a week later, we did the same thing with the same group over at the Woburn Street. And then we did a similar model at the North and West with the principals from those two buildings. So they weren't, you know, able to see each other's buildings from the other side of the town, which was nice. But it was, you know, we'd walk in, we'd spend a few minutes in there, we'd engage with kids if we could, step out in the hall and have a quick conversation about what did you see, what did you think, what kind of feedback would you give this teacher if you were doing a formal observation? At the end of that, we gave all the positives back to the staff. This was not a formal evaluation, so we shared with them all the great things that we saw, which were all true. So we weren't making things up, so we saw a lot of great things. So to make it sort of a feel-good and make staff feel comfortable. So that was good use of time, I think, for us this year. The focus for last year and this year has been on the issue of conferring, which I'll talk about in just a moment, but that's sort of at the heart of the workshop model. Again, I'll elaborate a little bit in a moment, but that's really been our focus with TLA and teachers. And the writing workshop shift is sort of starting now, next year, as again, I'll tell you at the end of the presentation, you'll see a graphic, but next year, we will officially launch Writer's Workshop in certain grades. We've had professional development on Writer's Workshop this year. We don't expect the transition to Writer's Workshop to be quite as jolting as it was to do Reader's Workshop a couple of years ago because it's the same idea, it's the same structure. It's just a writing curriculum versus a reading curriculum, but the structure is exactly the same. So teachers should be able to make that transition a little bit easier. And I don't want you to think kids aren't writing if they're not doing Writer's Workshop, they're just using other methods that they've been using, you know, in the past. So it's not that we're not writing at the elementary level, we just haven't adopted the program officially or implemented the program officially yet. So our program is a balanced literacy program, which has, it can have many different definitions. You know, in Wilmington, we think of it as a program that gives explicit teaching in reading and explicit teaching in writing, and then there's a word study component. Right now, we have a word study program that goes up to grade two. Next year, we will be piloting a word study program for grades three, four and five with the hope to adopt a program the following year so that we will have a word study or phonics program that goes from grades K through five. Right now, it stops in Wilmington at grade two. And that was largely because there really weren't well-designed programs out there yet. There are now two programs that we'll be piloting next year, one by Pearson and one by Fontes and Pennell, who also published the Lucy Cockens Units of Study. So we will, we'll be looking at that, there'll be more to come around that. But the balanced literacy program really addresses the needs of all learners, it allows teachers to sort of be those informed decision-makers around the curriculum and how they can make adjustments as needed, sort of on the fly, to help individual students that may have different needs. That's that flexibility that is involved with a program like this. There's a 90-minute literacy block. If a teacher feels like they need to do more with reading on a day than they do on writing, then they can. If they feel like they need to spend a little more time on word study, they can on that day. So they do have flexibility. 90 minutes is short, so it's something we need to look at down the road to expand that to a 120-minute literacy block a day. So in Wilmington, with 90 minutes, that is relatively short period of time. So that's something we'll be looking at as we go forward. And this balanced literacy program that we have doesn't have an anthology that, you know, students read out of. It's really about having a rich classroom library. And so the last couple of years, we've had a budget line item. It does carry forward FY '20, which is great, that line item survived. And it's about $1,000 per grade level for teachers to buy books for their own classroom library. And it sounds like a significant amount of money, but if you take $1,000 and divide it across seven classrooms at a grade level, it, you know, it quickly kind of shrinks. I mean, it's certainly a good start. Teachers would love to have more, I'm sure, to buy more books, but they are using that money quite eagerly to increase their classroom libraries. So if you go into an elementary classroom, you'll see them organized in different ways, but they're typically in bins by level and kids can go up and choose the book that they want to read that's of interest to them at their particular reading level. So we choose the workshop, chose the workshop model here like many districts do across the state and across the country. It is a good way to sort of incorporate the idea of balanced literacy. It really invites kids to be active in their own learning, so again, gives them the choice of what they want to read in terms of their texts. It gives flexibility around how we assess kids. I was observing a class the other day and they were talking about, in that particular mini lesson, about setting goals as readers. And the teacher laid out a whole bunch of options, of things that kids could choose based on where they felt they were at the time. Now, of course, the teacher then goes around and confers and gives suggestions if the student's not exactly focused where he or she may think that they should be. But if they want to focus on reading at a just-right pace, or they want to focus on, you know, rereading words that confuse them, or looking at pictures for clues, like those are things they can set for their own reading goals and sort of become really involved in their own learning and take ownership of that. So that's a key element of the workshop model. And it also allows for a natural level of differentiation because teachers are, as I'll talk about in a moment, when they're going around and conferring with their students, they're able to make adjustments for individual students at any given moment in time, based on what those students need. I don't want to make it sound like differentiation is simple, and because we use this model, it happens, you know, I say it's a natural conduit for it, but it's still challenging, of course, for teachers to do, and this is something I continue to work and grow around. So just specifically around DI differentiated instruction workshop, as I said, is really responsive and adaptive. It allows them to respond immediately and make adjustments to their instruction with individual students. There's a lot of individual assessment gathering that happens during the conferring, so they're taking notes on individual kids and sort of what the student is struggling with. And I'm going to circle back in a few minutes and check on you and see how you're doing with that particular skill. So I think that's important to note. And it also allows for a lot of collaboration between special educators, reading specialists and classroom teachers to modify when necessary. So the Cockens Units of Study, you know, for some students, need to be modified at different levels, some very heavily. But they are able to do this so that students can access that curriculum. Our students that have the most significant disabilities around reading or writing, it is challenging. Those students often are pulled out because they're getting reading services, so it's finding the time, making sure they're not losing classroom instruction time around literacy so that they can get reading instruction. So it's that balance of, there's only so many minutes in a day, how do you make sure that they're getting that literacy instruction with their peers and getting the extra help that they need or programming that they need, Orton Gillingham or something to that effect? So that's something we're constantly looking at. It also relates to the master schedule at the elementary school, which goes back to the 90 minutes versus 120 minutes. So this is something that we have to really take a serious look at in the next year or two to make sure that we have a plan going forward and how to better utilize those minutes. So there are really three major components to the workshop model. If you were to walk into a classroom at any time during a literacy block, K-5, the expectation is that you would see something that kind of unfolds, as I'm going to describe. You'd have a very brief mini lesson. This is direct instruction. Kids are sitting on the carpet in front of the teacher and the teacher is providing them with a 10-minute tops, a 10-minute lesson on the specific skill or goal for that particular day. They're demonstrating a strategy typically, they're using the language that they want students to use, language that comes right out of the Lucy Cockens Units, that making predictions, graphic that you see there is called an anchor chart. In most of our elementary classrooms, you will see these posted all over the place because there's one that's used for each mini lesson or for each unit, maybe a couple of them. And then they post them up so that students can refer back to them at any time during the year. This is not a Wilmington one, this is one that I pulled offline, but, you know, this is very typical to what you might see. So this mini lesson would have been around the idea of making predictions and that language of, I think blank because is the language the teacher would use, likely reading an anchor text. And they'd read a passage and say, hmm, I think this because of this. And they're trying to model that exactly for students because after that 10-minute lesson, they're going to go out and they're going to do this work themselves. So if you walked into the meet of the lesson, which is this 30 to 45-minute slot where they're doing independent work, and it can be small group as well, but this independent work section, this is where kids are reading. If it was Writer's Workshop, they'd be doing their writing. And the teacher's going around and conferring with them, checking in with individuals or with groups. Sometimes if it's a particular skill and they need to pull five kids over to work with them, they may do that and it will be a teacher and five students in a group while others are independently reading. Sometimes they're reading buddy books and they're reading to each other and listening to each other, but they always have a specific skill that they're supposed to be practicing either alone or with each other. It's pretty amazing to walk into a room and see this portion of the lesson because it can be absolutely frenetic or it can be like library quiet. And it works either way, right? So kids are told to just find a place you're comfortable. They'll be under desks, they'll be curled up in a corner, they have beanbag chairs, they have, I mean, all kinds of things I've never imagined you would sit on that teachers have turned into comfy chairs. The idea is find a place you're comfortable physically and also emotionally, right? That's why some kids like to, they want to be private where they read, so they find a little nook under, literally under a desk and they're sitting and they're reading quietly there. You know, some of them have to read out loud to themselves, so they go into the corner and they do that. So it's really neat to watch and that's when the teacher is going around with his or her conferral notes and they're talking to that student about their reading, they're asking them to read to them and they're making notations around, sort of, what's that one thing that I'm concerned about? They use that Reader's Workshop, the Lucy Cockens language to say, you know, you know, strong readers do this, I want you to practice that and then I'm going to come back to you, right? So that whole thing happens for about 30 or 40 minutes. And it's really, I think, the most powerful portion of the whole, the whole cycle. And that's where that conferral takes place, which again, is really at the heart of all of this, and that's why we focused our coaching around that. And then lastly, is just like a five-minute share session. They bring them back to the rug, they reinforce the skill that they were practicing and they ask, everybody wants to volunteer, but they ask maybe two students to they ask, everybody wants to volunteer, but they ask maybe two students to share out their experiences and how using that strategy worked for them. What did they find difficult? What, how did it help them? Of course, everybody wants to share there, but the teacher that really has control of this modality of instruction knows that, okay, we're going to take two pieces of feedback. We're going to recap. Maybe we're going to talk about what we're doing tomorrow, but we're closing this down and we're going to move on. So really, if they can keep it to 10 minutes at the beginning and five minutes at the end, they do have a nice chunk of time in the middle for the kids to be reading. Generally, word study would happen either prior to this or after. Most of the time, I see it happening sort of as the opening 15, 20 minutes of the literacy block. Teachers with a 90-minute block would not likely do reading and writing on the same day. That's just not possible, so they'd have to sort of adjust around that. With a two-hour block, you might be able to get reading and writing in, in the same, in the same block. So as I mentioned, we use the Cockens, Lucy Cockens units of study. These are highly research-based. We have already purchased in the district the units for reading and writing K through five. So teachers have them in their possession in their classrooms. As I mentioned, we're continuing to grow our libraries. The units for Cockens are about five to six weeks, and there's usually four per grade level in reading and four in writing. Reading focuses both on fiction and nonfiction, or as she calls it, informational texts. And then the writing components are focused on opinion, information, and narrative writing, which aligns with the Common Core standards. So, you know, if you think of, it may be exactly four per grade. I'm just not sure if there's a grade level in there that has three or a grade level that has five, but typically, there's four per grade level. So in terms of implementation, if this makes sense, and I noticed I had a typo, the last column should say 2020, 2021, not 2012. We're not going back in time in a time machine, but in 2016, we rolled out Reader's Workshop everywhere except K in grade two. I was not here then. I don't know if that was a budgetary decision, or if we just felt those two grades were not prepared at that point, but for any, whatever reason, we rolled it out in sort of two groups. And then the following year, K in grade two joined. And then this year, everyone's either in year two or three of the rollout with coaching, and coaching has happened all throughout, all the way back to 16. In 1819, you see WWPD, that's Writer's Workshop Professional Development. It was provided to all teachers in all grades K through five this year in anticipation for next year. And you can see here, this is sort of similar to what we did in 1617. We're having a staggered rollout officially of Writer's Workshop. We will roll it out officially in grade one and grade three next year. That's the expectation. And then the other grades officially in 2021. However, these grades here that are not officially rolling it out next year have the materials and have been told that they can use the materials if they see fit, because there are many teachers in these four grades that are ready. They feel like they've got the workshop model under their belt. They don't need to wait another year so they can start to dabble in this. But the official rollout for those four grades will be in 2021. Coaching will continue next year, likely also in 2021, but maybe, that may be the year that we start to back off, and then eventually, it goes away. This is not something that we keep forever. Once teachers get comfortable enough, then the coaching disappears. The workshop model itself has actually been so well-received and successful that now we're considering helping teachers utilize it when they're teaching math. It's not limited to any one curriculum or any one discipline. It's a teaching method that can be used, or a model that can be used anywhere. A lot of school districts do utilize it for math, and it does line up well with the Pearson Math Program that we have, based on how those lessons are structured, so we actually could do that. And there are some teachers that do it knowingly, and there are others that are structuring their lessons that way and not even realizing that it's lining up with sort of the concept of the workshop model. So that's not immediate, but that's something we're already in talks with to consider, even if it's just to ask some teachers if they want to try it as sort of a study group. Like, let's say we get a group of you together to implement workshop at the, for math, like, you know, and we can have a conversation and sort of push it out that way, in a non-threatening way. So there's a lot of curriculum work going on at the elementary school, so I'm very cognizant of that and trying not to overwhelm. We want to make sure that what we're doing, we're doing well, and teachers are feeling confident and comfortable, and they're executing the new programs the way they need to, so that's just important. This is something for us to always consider. So that's, that's a very quick overview of where we are with relative to Reader's Workshop.
Dr. Regan, any questions or comments on where we're at and where we're going? Okay, Mrs. Brison.
Dr. Regan, can you tell us a little bit about the TLA coaches and what types of coaching, but most importantly, how many sessions are they in each? Are they in each school? What is that? Can, I'm not sure I understand that completely.
Yeah, so they're typically in each school for, what, the equivalent of about four to six days in a school year.
School year.
Yeah, so they spread it out. They tend to come on a two-day bunch, so they'll come on a Monday and a Tuesday, and then they'll be gone for six or eight weeks, and they come back on another, two consecutive days, just so that they can sort of be there and do a variety of things. Now, sometimes, they're meeting with grade levels as a group. They're always doing individual coaching with teachers, but if there's time in the day, they might meet with the whole fifth grade and have a conversation about a particular item. When they coach, they either teach a lesson and model a lesson for a teacher, they co-teach a lesson with a teacher, or the teacher takes the lead and then the coach sits after. So they, they plan the coaching sessions so that it's right before a teacher's prep or free block, or, you know, so that if the teacher can teach the lesson, then the coach can sit with them for 30 minutes after and give them the coaching that they need. They don't do it right in front of the kids, obviously. So that's, that's generally what it looks like when they, when they come into a building.
Thank you. Sure. Go ahead. This is my area, so.
Absolutely.
Sorry. I won't ask all of them.
Be kind.
I'll just ask a couple more. So one thing, so they, something about not doing reading and writing in the same day, do you mean they're not doing reading and writing the same day, or they're just not doing it in the workshop model?
So they're not, right now, they're likely not doing it in the workshop model. We have some teachers that may be trying it right now. And maybe I shouldn't have said the same day. I should have said like, within that 90-minute block. So teachers are finding other time to do it, but I'll be honest, like even given how much time there is, there will be days where they're not fitting both in, in the same day, which goes back to this major issue around fixing that elementary schedule.
Very problematic, especially as you're rolling out the writing workshop.
Yeah.
Because if it's not consistent, and then it doesn't roll out properly, so it's going to be important probably to think about timing, I would imagine, as you, as you've stated a couple of times, but definitely.
And that question did come up at our, at our PD in March with all, I was, it popped into, I want, almost all-sex buildings, and the coaches were asked, I think in like three or four of the places I stopped, they asked that same, the kids, the teachers asked that same question. Okay, we have to do this. We have 90 minutes. How do we do that, right? So they, they had a very good answer, but like, both of them have to happen, and basically, it's not going to be easy for you, but you need to find this time until they, meaning I was fix the schedules so that you have dedicated time in there. I think they're also concerned because of the science piece that's going to be rolled out. You know, they're already teaching science, but not with a formal program, so I think, you know, I do believe, having looked at the schedules with principals and with Holly, it's not easy, but that there is a ti, there is a way to capture time more effectively. We just had, I think the struggle is we share staff, and we have the structure that we've talked about, we have these sister schools across town, and it's just, it's those things that get in the way and they shouldn't, right? These are the things that we shouldn't be worrying about, but they end up being these obstacles that we have to figure out a way around, so.
When you're thinking of things in silos, it's so hard to, so if we can connect with more integration, and sort of connecting the reading, and then it's not as hard to fit, because if you think of science as so separate, but you're not integrating it within literacy, it can feel like, them don't have time to do these all effectively throughout the day, but if I can really pull together and do some good units, then it becomes a little bit, and obviously, for the kids, for them to, to see it all coming together, that it's not, okay, take off this hat and put this hat on, but now I'm really thinking of, I'm doing literacy, but I'm looking at it through a scientist's eyes or something.
And one of the science programs we're piloting, I won't say which, because the pilot's not done yet, does highlight the fact that, and it's, it's very clear, it's that they have, they have literacy connections that are all Common Core connected, so like, the teachers that were doing the pilot with that said, oh my gosh, like, that directly links to this particular reading unit that we're doing, right? So I think that was important for them to see. And then the other thing is the Cockens units of reading and writing do overlap too, so it's not, this is what the coaches were good at telling them, it's not that you need to dedicate 90 minutes of reading and 90 minutes of writing. There are units that, that connect in that, you know, within that 90-minute chunk, you're going to be able to do both. The decision for the teacher is whether or not you need more time with reading today than writing and vice versa, and, you know, again, if you have 120 minutes or more, it would make it even easier to make those decisions.
And the units of study are, are they intense? So teachers, part of that work is also learning how to look through it and pull out, but do it in a way that's consistent across grade levels so that we're not doing the same thing twice, or we're really elevating the, so it's, it's, I mean, I think other programs are amazing, but it definitely takes time, and I think a true commitment to the time and the day to do it, because if you're doing work, if you're doing writing workshop once a week, teachers aren't going to see what they need, or even twice a week, like, I'm doing Monday and Friday, or, so I think putting that, doing it, even if you have the 30 minutes to do it daily, is better than just pushing it off and doing it the two days. Sorry. So my one last, two more questions. The, the, so the reading workshop, so I know that there were issues early on with books and having enough texts, not necessarily text in the library, that didn't seem to be so much in the library for independent reading, but the texts where students were reading maybe a grade-level text together. And so have we resolved that as far as children having books in their hand when they are doing grade-level work, because, and is that being covered? Are they still being exposed to grade-level text daily?
They are. So all the mentor texts that are used for each of the units are grade-level. As teachers are expanding their library, we've asked them to be cognizant of that as well and not ju, you know, make sure that you are buying some level of readers, but you're, you're also increasing your own library of books that are being used while they're exposed to the metric text. But you're right, it's not, it's a little different than sort of the anthology approach where they're, they're not necessarily all, when they're independent reading, reading at, at a, at a grade-level text, for example. They're reading something that's just right book for them. And that's one of the squeaky points of this method versus the other, right? So, but it is something that I know Holly is really in tune with and making sure that she's giving that kind of feedback to teachers, and, and the exposure to grade-level texts is really critically important, and we're trying to even push it out into, as we're talking about science, again, like, there's going to be books that are going to be associated with those units, and kids should be exposed to grade-level texts there as well, and so it's an ongoing, I think, effort to make sure that those, that exposure is there.
I'll save. Would anybody besides? I'll talk to them now. Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Thank you. Would anybody else, Mr. Ragstil?
Yeah, no, no. This is a good one. It's good to see the excitement and the passion for it. This is important stuff, so. Mr. Ragstil, your turn.
All right. I have a few questions as well, so.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned in the, the rollout for Writer's Workshop is going to be staggered over the next two years, but that, and I, I don't remember now if you said that if it was most or all of the teachers had the training, the professional development, dude, they all had, and that some of them were choosing to do that. So given if they've all had the professional development, why are we rolling it out over two years as a staggered basis and not all next year?
Yeah, so there, there's, there are different curriculum initiatives that are happening at different grade levels. So we were trying to be thoughtful around, you know, the word study pilot, for example, in the intermediate schools in the, in the third grade. There's the fact that K and two are a year behind the other grades with Reader's Workshop, so they're less, I'm going to say less competent, but they have one less year under their belt of that than their counterparts in the other grades. So we were trying to mirror something there to, to be, to be fair to them, to say, look, I mean, you've only had now two years of coaching in this model. We're not going to layer on Writer's Workshop yet. It's not a, it doesn't work out perfectly, but that was sort of our thinking around trying to be fair to them in what this would look like as we, as we roll it out, wanting it to be as successful as possible. You know, we, we did discuss at the elementary curriculum leadership team, we did discuss two plans. One was sort of the rip-off-the-band-aid plan and just say, everybody, we're going, we're going, get ready, hold on. And, and I'll be honest, at the, at the intermediate level, you know, it's, it's been a harder transition for some of those teachers, so, to go to workshop from sort of their traditional approach, and we were concerned about adding another layer onto that until they fully felt comfortable with the Reader's Workshop approach, so. That's, that's sort of what worked into our decision to try and be thoughtful around which grades are pushed at which time, so.
Okay. You also mentioned that there's, that this model can be used for math instruction as well, and that some people are kind of playing, playing with that idea, structuring their lessons that way. What is the, I'm trying to sort of think in my mind how that's going to, how that looks in a classroom. What is the equivalent of kind of quiet, private reading in a math, in a math lesson?
Yeah, so it's probably less about that than it is about using stations, right? So if our, the way the Pearson program works is it has a 10-minute focus lesson, which, you know, sometimes includes a video, but we're at the rug, we're learning this concept, and then they're going out either to stations to do different activities that focus around that particular skill or concept, or teachers are breaking them up into deliberate groups based on their needs, and they're spending that chunk of time doing that. So it's not necess, I mean, it is, it's independent practice and group practice, but it's not the same as reading where they're sort of sitting quietly doing math facts. It's, it's, you know, kindergarten in particular, if you go there, it's always stations, so they have four places where they're going to practice different, you know, using manipulatives or, you know, whatever, they're doing different things like that. You see that less as they get older, but that's really what that 30, 40 minutes is. It's small group work, or some independent work, or I need six of you to come over and work with Misses so-and-so, and you guys are going to work in pairs, that kind of thing. So there's not the conferring piece necessarily as formal, but that's sort of how, how I've seen it in the classrooms that are doing it in district now.
Okay. I, I would see that conferring could still be very relevant.
It could happen, yeah. But it's not, it's not, so what, what's happening, what they're doing now is, you're not seeing that, like, they're not making that transition where they have their referral notes and they're doing that, but it certainly could be applied.
Yeah, the conferring part, I think, makes complete sense. I think that, yeah, that equivalent of what, what they do while they go, if they go away, I can see it, but I see how that would be adapted. When, when, when the students are doing their independent reading, I know that there's this concept of finding like the just right book for you, and that they're instructed to kind of, you know, open, open to a page and read a couple paragraphs and see, it's generally based on how many words do you not know? Like, if there are too many words you don't know, that's too hard for you. If you know all the words, that's too easy for you, and you're trying to find some kind of balance there. I mean, I know that it's, you know, a proxy, that, you know, trying to find a shorthand way, it's kind of hard to know the difficulty of a book without actually reading the whole book, because there's more than just vocabulary that contributes to difficulty. Some books have, you know, everything is just right on the surface, and other books you're reading a little bit between the lines, and it's not always about vocabulary. Is, are we generally finding that that's been useful or effective? This might be getting a little too much into the weeds, but I'm just wondering how useful we're finding that as a proxy for getting students into the right kinds of books?
Yeah, I mean, that would be probably a better question. If Holly were here tonight, she could probably answer it a lot better than I could. Certainly, when I've been in classrooms and I hear the term "just write books," which is what they use, I haven't had any feedback from teachers saying like, yeah, well, this is not an effective way for kids to find the books that they should be reading, but I can't give you any more detail than that. It's something I certainly could ask Holly's opinion on, and we could, we could circle back around that, but, yeah.
I've been really happy here in town to not see, go to your, go to your blue basket or go to this basket, or where kids are actually learning how to choose appropriate books, because that is a skill, and when they go to bookstores or libraries, they do need to choose from an unlabeled essential, right? And so I think when, when there's some buildings where, not in, in our town, but where things are various, like you can only choose from this particular basket, that can be really difficult for children. One, they have no choice or ownership, but two, they're not actually developing the skill to choose a book that's just right. So I think that it's exciting not to see it broken down in like, this is your level basket, and this, you can only go from the top shelf, but the rest of you can choose from here. So I would urge us to stay kind of on that, on that track, but, but I hear your point.
So I would urge us to stay kind of on that, on that track, but, but I hear your point.
Yeah, teachers are really cognizant of how the, because they have to label them in some ways so they can see, but what they use to sort of monitor what level the book is, is they're really careful to make sure it's not sort of segregated in a way that, I know I can only read from this bin, or, you know.
Any other questions or comments? I know, this is exciting stuff. Absolutely.
And yes, thank you to, to Dr. Regan for, the intention here, again, is, and perspective is around a spotlight into the work that we help support and which ultimately is here driving each and every meeting. I will just make a, a comment that was noted just a couple of moments ago, and, and Dr. Regan alluded to the, I'm trying to think about the right word, but maybe abundance. There's a, there is an abundance of work that Dr. Regan walked into, and I've become aware of here in the district, all very good planning, all very good work, particularly at the elementary level. These, these sort of highlight two, if you will, the readers and writers piece. There is an awful lot more that is in the planning phases, is, is being planned through the implementation phase, and certainly Dr. Regan has more than had, in addition to acclimating to the district and to his role, understanding the work that he needs to do and has been doing very, very earnestly with principles to plan what's to come. And it's a little daunting to think about beyond just the workshop model, but more to come around science and social studies, in addition to this is the foundation that's there. So it's with intention to share more of that with you, because I think it's important that you're aware of it. I, I'm aware of it, certainly not to the level that, that Dr. Regan is, but it is a focal point of the, the work of this district. And again, all, all good work, all good programming, but some heavy lifting that's begun and that will need to continue. So, Mr. Ragstil, the question around sort of a great one around, so why not everyone at one time? And I, as you start to become in tune with where we have been recently at the elementary level and where we are out of necessity going, there's a lot that's at play here. And certainly more to come on all of that, but just, I want to thank again Dr. Regan for his work beyond just this, but I can tell you, when you hear him say he is in those classrooms, he is in those classrooms, I'm pleased to be able to say, I'd be able to see a lot of what he's described here tonight, but, but thank you for your work. I do just want to say, because I feel like I left it out, teachers have worked very, very hard over the past. Yes, they absolutely have. And I don't want that to be missed in my presentation. They, they really have bought into this and are working very hard to, to adopt this and do this right, so I just want to recognize that. And, and that's evident, last piece, it's evident where I, I've had the pleasure to be just this week in, in multiple classrooms in two different buildings at two very different grade levels, and this you see is happening. It's, it's, it's quite something, so.
Mr. Ragstil, you've got my eye.
I just want to quickly follow on, that I was not implying we should have been rolling out all the ones.
Oh, no.
Because the, yeah, thoughtful implementation is as important as having a good plan or a good, you know, system and curriculum in the first place. That, you know, people, when we're prepared to roll it out effectively, this one, we'll see the results from it.
Mrs. Burns?
Could I ask, I know, yeah, several years ago, we had a, forgive me if I don't get the title correctly, a curriculum review schedule. I think what would be helpful, go, once we get to that point, because I know there's a lot of work that has to be done and to move forward to get us to where we need to be, but I think that was very helpful, I know, for myself in becoming more familiar with what the process, just, just seeing the mapping, what the process is for curriculum review and renewal, along with what programs are coming up for revisit. So I mean, for those who will be joining us after next week, I think it's very helpful to kind of get a broad look as to what grades we're doing certain programs as these, as we roll out with the new science curriculum and social studies and civics and all that. I think, at that juncture, I think that would be helpful so that we can kind of see and kind of follow along as you guys continue to hammer out and work and enrich our programming.
So if I may, I'll, I'll speak for, for our assistant superintendent here, because he probably won't say it, that that is together. He's worked hard to put a draft together, so stay tuned for that.
Oh, good.
Because it is more than in the works and important for, I think, all to see, not just our, our teachers, of course, but our instructional leaders, and it can't hurt for you to see it as well.
Fantastic, great.
Any other comments or questions? This was a good one for us. Love it. Great, great, great. All right, moving on to our third item under New Businesses this evening, which is the Superintendent Evaluation. I want to acknowledge that the, the Superintendent of Public Schools is one of the few positions, the few roles where their evaluation must be done publicly. It's actually required by law. And as a HR professional, I always had a trouble with that, right? Because I had always been taught, you praise in public, you criticize in private. And the rev, the review process was something that, very secretive, behind the scenes, behind closed doors sort of thing. So as a school committee member, going through this process, I have always found this very challenging, so I'll just, just acknowledge that.
Impressive inherent.
Exactly, right? But that, that is the case that we find ourselves in. But I would say, over the course of this year, I truly believe as a committee and as an administrative team, we have been very transparent about this process. We brought Dorothy Presser in from MASC early on in our school year to walk us through the recommended process and procedures, and she gave us some good suggestions on how to attack this process. Dr. Brand through, through his work, has provided regular updates and check-ins to us. So I feel quite confident this evening that there are no surprises. Hi, again, public process. Tonight, we will be, I will be reading, and we will be discussing the summative evaluation. And if people have been paying attention, this final document has actually been sitting on the district's website for the past week. So Dr. Brand has already seen it. But just to give you a little, little summary of, of the process that we used, a couple of weeks ago, the seven of us completed individual evaluations on Dr. Brand. That's what our thoughts were. We used the same format, literally the same form, and we were reviewing him as individuals on his goals and the four indicators. We, as a committee, chose to use a subcommittee to pull those seven evaluations into one final document. Our subcommittee was comprised of myself, Mrs. Bryson, and Mrs. Newhouse. We met recently to tackle the project of taking seven individual reviews and putting them together into one. Not as hard as we thought it was going to be, right? It was very, actually pretty easy. But for, for the public and for the rest of the committee members that weren't with us, I just thought I'd share how we tackled it. Very simple, we literally sat in the conference room at the Roman House, we took copies of those seven evaluations, laid them out in front of us, thank you, I don't want to whack your, I don't want to whack your computer. We tallied up the ratings and double-checked them to make sure that, that we were consistent, and the ratings that we chose was majority rules. And the good news is, is that we were all very consistent, so we were, the majority was truly the majority. And then we tackled the comment sections. Again, I was quite pleased to see that as seven individuals, we were all very consistent in the meaning and the intention behind our comments. We referred to samples of work, we referred to evidence, we referred to meetings and things that were presented to us publicly, and we all were saying pretty much the same thing. We might have chosen different wording, but we all pretty much said the same thing. And that's pretty impressive, so thank you to each one of you for participating in that process. So with that, I'm going to take the group through the review. I'm not going to read it word for word, because we'd be here for probably another couple hours, but I'm certainly going to share the highlights. Again, this document is available and has been available to the public, it is on the district's website. A signed copy will be retained at the Roman House, as well as our individual evaluations. Okay? So first off, I'm going to start with the performance goals, because those were the three goals, remember, at the beginning of the year, Dr. Brand proposed to us, we talked about them pretty extensively over the course of the year. We actually had to vote to accept those as his goals. So if you go to page three, if you want to follow along in your, your packets, the printout copies that we gave, the first was the professional practice goal, the completion of the superintendent entry plan. And under that for bullets, things that we considered, Dr. Brand was to familiarize himself with the people and programs that defined the Wilmington educational community. He was developing an understanding about the things that WPS stakeholders are proud of and believe are successful hallmarks of the school system. He was looking to identify the critical issues that represent areas of concerns that stakeholders believe need to be addressed, and completing a district scan that helps think, help him inform his future in long-term and short-term planning for the district. And he also was going to present those findings to the school committee, which he did. So if you look at the ratings, our choices were did not meet, some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded, and his overall rating towards that performance goal was met. Under the student learning goal, which was the coordinated program review corrective action plan, again, something that we've talked about a lot this year and have received regular updates, obviously the progress monitoring, the presentation of a mid-year report, and a presentation of the end-of-year summary on the work that's been completed in compliance with our obligations. Again, that's something that we know that is ongoing, but we have had regular updates on. Same five choices for ratings, and again, our overall rating was that he met that goal. And thirdly, the district improvement goal, which was the strategic plan development, that's the oversight of the process that involves stakeholders throughout our community, to embark upon developing our new strategic plan, establishing the foundation of the work ahead, and the plan for that to be presented to us for approval prior to the end of this school year. And I know that we're pretty, pretty close to having that completed. So again, the same five choices for ratings, and we as a group chose significant progress towards that goal. And then we jump into the performance ratings for the standards of which there are four. The first one is instructional leadership. There are five different indicators for that standard, curriculum, instruction, assessment, evaluation, and data-informed decision-making, and right down the line was a proficiency rating, and of their, of which there are four choices, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Straight down the line, proficient there. And I do want to make note of, of some of the highlighted comments. Superintendent Brand has demonstrated excellent leadership during his first year in the Wilmington Public School District. He has spearheaded many initiatives to ensure that our curriculum is aligned to state frameworks and is meeting the needs of all learners. In his entry report, Dr. Brand also identified the overall consistency of the W public, the Wilmington Public Schools curriculum and the school and classroom experience across the district as items of concern that need to be addressed. And I think on the standards, it might be helpful, I can read them certainly, but if there's anyone who would like to add anything to that from the committee, you're welcome to. Anybody for standard one? No? Okay. Standard two refers to management and operations, and again, there are five indicators under standard two. Environment, human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, policies, and finally fiscal systems. Again, the same four choices for ratings, and we gave Dr. Brand a rating of proficient for standard number two, management and operations. And again, I'd like to, to read some comments here. Superintendent Brand has shown strong management skills in the administration of Wilmington Public Schools. Dr. Brand has provided regular and consistent progress updates on his performance goals, demonstrating his ability to develop and execute plans. He has worked closely with the human resources manager to provide timely updates on personnel reports, and the director of finance to prepare and propose our annual budget. Together with his leadership team, Dr. Brand recommended a budget that is supportive of our district goals with a firm understanding of and respect for Wilmington's available resources. So that's standard number two. Anything anyone would like to add or comment on? Okay. Standard number three is family and community engagement, and again, there's several indicators there, four, to be exact. Engagement, sharing responsibility, communication, and family concerns. All of us were consistent in saying a rating of proficient for standard number three. And I'd like to read some comments under that. The school committee is in consensus that family and communicate, community engagement is an area of strength for Superintendent Brand. Dr. Brand has worked diligently to engage and communicate effectively with families and all community members this year. He has quickly established his presence in the district as being a strong leader with excellent communication skills, as evidenced by his frequent and thoughtful emails, his Twitter feed, his responses to community and national issues, as well as his detailed superintendent rapport at all school committee meetings. And the final comment here, I'd really like to read, because I, I thought it was quite touching. Most impressive, though, is how Dr. Brand shows great compassion towards students, families, staff, and community members in all situations. And finally, the standard number four, which is professional culture. There are several indicators under the professional culture standard, commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, communication, continuous learning, shared vision, and managing conflict. And again, our overall rating for this standard was proficient. And again, I can read a couple of the comments. Superintendent Brand has taken steps to foster a strong professional culture within Wilmington Public Schools. He has been diligent in building trust and positive working relationships within our school district. He truly leads by example, and the staff can see it. Dr. Brand has shown the importance of engaging and including all stakeholders in the work of the district. And then finally, if you go back towards the front, you'll see on the cover page are the overall ratings that we just spoke of. But I'd really like to include the final comments, and there's, there's quite a number of them, but I think they're very important to share, so bear with me. Superintendent Brand has quickly become a respected leader and has brought much-needed stability to the district. While only in his tenth month as superintendent, Dr. Brand has prepared and presented a thorough entry plan, has supervised the coordinated program review corrective action plan, and has spearheaded the district-wide strategic planning committee. The entry plan demonstrated Dr. Brand's high level of understanding of the community in such a short time. Since beginning his role as superintendent in July, Dr. Brand has worked tirelessly to build strong relationships with all faculty, students, families, school committee, and community members. His attention to detail is impressive, and his ability to manage many short and long-term projects simultaneously should be commended. Dr. Brand's judgment and experience have enabled him to make good decisions about where to prioritize his time and attention. He has acted swiftly and deliberately in areas where he perceived a need to start work immediately, such as reviewing the middle school program of studies and addressing the structure of the Office of Student Support Services. It's a good thing we approved that, huh? It is clear that Dr. Brand has made a positive impact on our district, and we are enthusiastic about the continued development of the strategic plan. We are confident that this plan will guide our continued success and progress under Dr. Brand's leadership. So there we go. Does anybody from the committee like to add anything? Mrs. Burns?
I would just like to thank the committee for, it's not an easy task to combine seven, as you had said, seven, first, well, evaluations to cohesively represent, represent, I mean, it was so smooth in the combination of all seven of our comments. So I, I had a call, I actually called Mrs. Newhouse, I'm like, Mrs. Newhouse? I'm like, "Mrs. Newhouse, what was the methodology of putting this together? I don't, it's kind of, it's definitely what I said, but not how I said it." And she's like, "Well, since we all were on the same page, we kind of," and I have to commend you all for the time, because it, it is quite the task to do. And I think it came out absolutely, the final, final report, lovely and very representative of, I know how I feel about this year's work and your tasks, because I know it wasn't an easy task walking into Wilmington, but we're grateful for all the work that you've done this year.
Absolutely. Anyone else like to? Mr. Ragsdale?
So you mentioned that it, that it's available on our website, and I just wanted to add that it's on the superintendent's page of our website, in case anyone wants to go and find it, finding things on our website.
We were trying to make it easy for people to find.
Finding things on our website isn't always easy.
Sometimes things can get a little, little buried.
I could tweet it if you want.
There you go. Please do, please do. Absolutely. It's like putting it on a refrigerator, right? Being proud of it.
Actually, I could think about that.
No, we are, we are very happy. I think this year, in some ways, was very easy to do the evaluation, because we were very consistent. Didn't know what to expect, you never know, but we did receive lots of regular updates if people were paying attention. The information was there for us, and you made it easy. So there you go. Okay. So what I'm going to do is pass around a official summative evaluation, and by signing this, this means this is our way of accepting it. This copy will be retained in the Roman House, as will our signed individual evaluations. And if you haven't had a chance to sign your individual one, please do so. Okay? Any other questions, comments? No?
Are the individual ones online, or are they only?
No, those are not online, but they are available and will be retained at the Roman House. Excellent. And while we're, we're doing that, public comment. Anybody like to say anything? Ask any questions? Mr. Talbot?
Just want to make a statement.
Sure.
This is my last meeting. This is my last meeting as a Wilmington School Committee member. The past three years have been very enlightening and educational for me to see what goes into running a school system. I, I have a much greater appreciation for all the hard work that they do. I feel very lucky to have been a part of this process. I'd like to take a moment to thank the wonderful past, present Wilmington School Committee members, David, Joe, Jen, Julie, Steve, MJ, Steve's not here tonight, but for donating their time for such an important role for the town of Wilmington. I also would like to personally thank Dr. Brand for his strong leadership role as a superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Brian Regan, for all your hard work. And it's a lot, it's, I can tell it's hard, those PowerPoint presentations. Paul Roggerio, there's no words to describe how vital you have been during my term as school committee member for the town of Wilmington. In the brief time I've known you, you've done amazing things to keep this, everything running smoothly, and I expect you will continue to do so going forward. I would also like to thank the amazing support staff of the Roman House that goes far and above to get the job done on a daily basis, like Jackie Raffey, Jen Contrada, Tristan Dixie, Michelle McLaren, and Lynn Morrison. I would like to give Paul a huge shout-out to the principals at the schools and the support staff for all the hard work they do on a daily basis. The teachers of Wilmington Public Schools are the best in the world. I am so proud to say that I live in this community that goes an extra mile to make sure the kids get the best education possible. I want to wish the returning and newest members, Jo Ellen, Jesse and Jason, all the best in the upcoming terms in the Wilmington School Committee members. I know you each will bring your own unique perspectives to the commu, the committee. I hope you, everyone gets out on, to vote this Saturday and attend the town meeting May 4th, 10:30.
Thank you. Anybody from the public like to offer any comments, questions? No? All right. Like Tom, tonight is my last meeting as well, and I just want to say it's been an honor and privilege to serve the children and the families of Wilmington. I truly mean that. When I first campaigned, my ally was a fourth grader at The West. And now we're looking at colleges. So it's been a, a long road. We've, we've certainly experienced a lot as, as a committee. Some committees never see some of the things that we've seen, but I'm very happy of the place that we're in, and I feel as though Tom and I are, are turning over the reins to an excellent group of people that will take our district in the right direction and on to the future. So thank you for the opportunity, and yes, everybody needs to get out to vote. I already voted. There you go. I love that absentee ballot thing. It's fabulous. All right, subcommittee reports.
Just briefly, I'll be attending May 1st Day on the Hill, which happens every year through MASCE, where we talk about the issues that are facing our state and as it pertains to education. I had meant to kind of open this at the last meeting, but of which I couldn't attend. But if anybody has any point, and I think I'd like to touch base with you too, Superintendent Brand, with regards to any points, I will be meeting with, I know, at least Representative Robertson. I still have to reach out to Senator Char's office. At the very least, I'm going to stop in and say hello, but if there's anything of interest that you'd like me to share with them or to, or bring to their attention, I'd be more than happy to, to share that. But I just wanted to invite that, open that up to the rest of the board members. I apologize for not being here earlier to kind of bring you before some folks have the time to think about it and discuss it, so, but I just wanted to bring it now and go from there.
Okay. Any questions or thoughts for Mrs. Burns? No? Okay. Mrs. Bryson?
So this is not an official subcommittee report, but some of us have been working a little behind the scenes to, to thank both you and Tom for your incredible work and dedication and commitment to the town of Wilmington. We, it's bittersweet, mostly bitter, but, but we have tried to come up with something to just say a true, genuine thank you. Thank you for your commitment, thank you for your leadership, thank you for being here. And it's not just in this room that you do this work, but it is many, people knew the amount of hours that go in beyond this one meeting. It's truly just to be surrounded by such exceptional people and to know that you've devoted this much time, and, and more people are here waiting to throw their, to get involved in this, and it's just very exciting to be a part of this. So it is so apropos that we did the evaluation tonight, and I feel really good that we were able to sort of tie that up as, as your last meeting as chair. And you do know you will be greatly missed.
Oh, thanks.
So we, we know how much you love All the Places You'll Go, since I think you've pulled that book out at least three times since I have been on the committee.
At least, if not further than that.
And so with the help of my fellow committee members, we put together our own version called Goodbye Julie and Tom by the Wilmington School Committee, inspired by All the Places You'll Go by Dr. Seuss. Congratulations. Today is the day. We're not sure we're ready, but you're off and away. Julie, you've guided us through storms, soared with us to high heights. There was nothing we couldn't accomplish once set in your sights. Tom, you asked the good questions and helped us to see things we might have missed and made us a stronger committee. You've both devoted hours to making our schools grand, approving a new homework policy, and hiring Superintendent Brand. The places we've been to, the hurdles we've jumped, your departure's not easy, in truth, we're a bit stumped, but you've guided us well and strengthened this team. We'll carry on working to fulfill your great dream. So did you succeed? Yes, you did indeed. You're off to great places. Today is your day. Your mountain is waiting, so get on your way. Well, don't really get on your way, but. So we have.
Oh, thank you.
Two beautiful plaques and a card stock copy of, of your poem.
Oh, thank you.
So, and I'll just, can I read this out loud?
Absolutely.
Presented to Mrs. Julie Broussard in honor of her dedicated commitment to the students of the Wilmington Public Schools for service on the Wilmington School Committee 2013 through 2019.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Can we get a picture of that? We should get a picture of you with that.
That, you should tweet. That should go on your Twitter feed.
Excellent. Thank you.
And then Tom, presented to Mr. Thomas Talbot in honor of his dedicated commitment to students of the Wilmington Public Schools for service on the Wilmington School Committee 2016 through 2019.
Thank you very much.
And Mrs. Burns, a little cake that we'll be able to enjoy after the meeting. And as you know, Ms. Dixie did order, oh, thank you, coffee, and there's water out there, so we can enjoy that after for our, our party.
Oh, thank you very much. Otherwise known as the executive session.
Otherwise known as the executive session, but an executive session is better with cake and coffee.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you very much. I, I really am truly touched. Very nice. Thank you. Any correspondence?
None this evening.
None this evening? Okay, great. Futures, school committee meeting dates, and notable agenda items. I did request to put back on the agenda school committee reorganization. We kind of talked about just the situation that we're in at our last meeting. Didn't really make any decisions, but I wanted to be transparent about where we're at. This is the first time in a long time that the chair will not be here for both the town meeting and for the next meeting for reorganization. So there's ways that you can handle that, for sure, but I did want to acknowledge that. Mrs. Burns, you weren't here at our last meeting when I first brought this up. And Mr. Bjork isn't here this evening, so we can't, we're kind of stuck. But anyway, I, I wanted to just acknowledge that. My suggestion certainly for town meeting certainly is up to the committee, but Mrs. Bryson is the vice chair. It's simply reading the articles that represent the schools at town meeting that seems appropriate.
And I would, not that it matters, but I would agree with that decision.
Okay, so that's a simple way to handle that. Aren't you lucky?
I'm so honored.
Very lucky. And at the next school committee meeting, which is when we traditionally do the school committee reorganization, again, you won't have a chair. So the, I think the simple solution on that one is to have Dr. Brand to open the meeting, and after the pledge allegiance and any student presentation that you might have, go right into the reorganization at that point, if folks are comfortable with that. Okay, I see some nodding heads.
Is there a reason that we would do that rather than just have Jen open the meeting as vice chair and acting chair?
However, that's also an option. It's what people are comfortable with. It's just what we've done in the past.
I, I think that's, that's right, that typically, the chair doesn't typically nominate.
Herself.
The, the chair role. So in the past, when we have reorganized, it has been the superintendent. It's the first thing we, we pick, so that, that chair for the upcoming year will then drive the rest of the reorganization discussion. So if I'm correct.
Right. And we, at that same meeting, we have also tackled subcommittee assignments. People may or may not be ready to do that at that meeting, and that's, that's okay. To our soon-to-be new members, bearing no strange things happening in the election, you're certainly welcome to start thinking about what you might be interested in doing. And we did acknowledge at our last meeting, we've all been there, we know how awkward it is to be at your very first meeting and be asked to choose a chair, vice chair, and secretary. We've been there. I, that happened to me my very first meeting, and I passed, because I didn't know what to do, and then I quickly cut, cut on. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that and certainly bring it forth to the public as well, that this is a slightly unique situation we're in, but it's okay, we can handle it. So, there you go. So our next two meetings, we've got a meeting on May 8th, and then we've got one on May 22nd. We are coming to the point in the year where it's all the fun things, the concerts, the art shows, elementary literacy night. So item number 12 on our agenda, you'll see listing of some great dates ahead. I want to point out two little changes under item E. May 7th is actually the band concert. I think the annual Pops concert has already happened, perhaps. But May 7th will be the band concert here in this building, in the gym, I believe it starts at 7 o'clock. That is something that all the public is welcome to, but certainly school committee members as well. And then on May 9th, the Strings Orchestra will be presenting their vertical concert that will take place, I, I believe it's in the Benton Auditorium. That's what I saw on the, on the school calendar, and I believe that's also a 7 o'clock start time. But this is, this is the fun time of year. Sure. Chromebook night, are we supposed to attend that? No? Okay. Okay, thank you. Just information, okay. I'm like, ooh, what's that? Do you want to go? Isn't that when they just said everyone's Chromebook? Do I really need to be there for that? Yes, you do. All righty. And our last item this evening on our agenda is an executive session, from which we will not return to public session. The motion here is the Wilmington School Committee will vote to enter into public session pursuant to the law, I'm sorry, executive session, thank you, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And in this case, this is the time of year when we do the administrative salaries. So the motion before us is that motion that I just read with the understanding that we will not return to public session. We will conclude from there. Mrs. Burns, so moved. Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, I saw your hand first, and this requires a roll-call vote. Mrs. Bryson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Talbot?
Yes.
And myself, Mrs. Broussard?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.